I have with me Matt Plane, Jeff Dranzak, Dr. Jean Quinn, Dr. Lori McEwen, Ms. Anne Musella, and Ms. Allison Powell will be joining us a little bit later in the meeting. We also have with us Superintendent Meyer, Counselor Matt Oliverio. Thank you to Dr. Arnoff, our Director of Technology, for hosting us this evening. And I believe our Human Resources Coordinator, Ros Amilio, is subbing for Ms. Di Miglio as our clerk this evening. So, Rose, thank you for being with us tonight. For those of you that are dialing in, I'm not sure if we have anybody on the phone this evening or not, but when we do come to public comment, we have a public comment portion at the beginning of the meeting, and then also opportunities throughout the agenda. If folks want to be able to make a comment, you'll just, while people who are logged in via their computer can use the raise hand function, you'll be using star nine to raise your hand and star six to unmute. And I think that's all I have for housekeeping. So, we'll go ahead and dive in. The next item on the agenda is the sealing of executive session minutes and disclosure of votes. As the school committee did not have an executive session this evening, we can dispense with that agenda item. Which brings us to recognitions. So, we have some outgoing members of the East Greenwich School Committee, of which I am one, and I believe I am turning this over to Superintendent Meyer. You need to unmute.
That you are, Madam Chair. Good evening, everybody, members of the school committee, members of the public that are attending this evening. I am honored, frankly, to be able to recognize the contribution of Ms. Mark, Mr. Dranzak, and Mr. Plane for their time on the school committee. I'd ask Dr. Arnoff to please put the presentation on and just start from the beginning, and then you could, if you would be so kind as to promote our special guest this evening that is here to make some special recommendations, recognition. So, with sincere gratitude for your service to the East Greenwich Public Schools, to the three of you. Next slide, please, Dr. Arnoff. Children are not a distraction from more important work. They are the most important work, and the three of you have certainly made that clear in every minute that you have spent on this school committee. So, at this time, I would like to ask Dr. Mercurio to join us for some special recognitions We have, we have Dr. Arnoff multitasking.
Dr. Mercurio has all said he just needs to speak.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, Dr. Mercurio. Oh, how nice to see you. The floor is yours, sir.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'm just trying to, oh, here I go. Good evening, everyone. Hopefully, you can hear me. You can hear me, I hope?
Yep.
Okay. Superintendent Meyer, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the committee, members of the public. I'm honored to be here to recognize the service of the three departing members of the committee. Indeed, it was the leadership expert, Dr. Ronald Hyffitz, who said, and I quote, "Worry not that your child listens to you; worry most that they watch you," unquote. The three departing members of the East Greenwich School Committee have provided fine individual and collective examples of how to do the work of school system oversight in a manner that illustrates that robust discourse can take place cordially, and that committee work in a public context requires an appreciation that one perspective is never enough to move meaningful work forward well. It is one thing to develop policies; it is quite another to implement and animate the work. Mr. Dranzak has done just that in the course of his time on the committee. Serving in leadership roles on multiple committees takes dedication and a determination to understand the totality of the entire organization. I am most grateful for his willingness to take on the depth and breadth of things such as transportation, finance, and revenue building for the district. These pursuits always mean more quality time with the superintendent, and I deeply appreciate Mr. Dranzak's hard work, most of which the public never sees because it involves countless hours and thankless hours of document and spreadsheet review and analysis. My guess is that Mr. Dranzak did not spend time looking out the windows of the old Cole Middle School or in the, when it was the old Cole Junior High, dreaming of becoming a school board member, but I can assure you that the school, the school system and this community are better places because he chose this pursuit. One of the things that I used to say repeatedly as superintendent was that the East Greenwich community is filled with people who have benefited from growing up here and have a profound respect and admiration for its history and tradition while being mindful that we need to do everything that we can to remain current. Mr. Plane is an excellent example of that. His service to the committee exemplified an understanding of schools and school systems and the complicated context in which these entities work. While his exceptional retrieval of Rhode Island general law and Title 16 specifically is noteworthy indeed, it was his thorough preparation for every meeting and excellent insight into the work at hand that I found most helpful as superintendent. His pride in his community and the schools of which he is a product is evident in his commitment to making the system competitive on all levels. Having the opportunity to work as a superintendent with a board member who is both a graduate of the public schools and a former educator is fortunate indeed. Eight years on an elected public board is a long time. To spend the majority of those years as chair of that board takes patience, equanimity of manner, and an ability to work with multiple stakeholders that most, quite frankly, simply do not have the leadership skill, competency, and habits of mind to do. Ms. Mark has demonstrated time and time again during her tenure that the amplification of stakeholder voice in the public domain can be done in a manner that is at once respectful, thoughtful, and constructive. As superintendent, I was most grateful for the ability to work with someone whose intentions were to make the schools and the community better places to learn and grow. Out of necessity and design, the chair spends more time with the superintendent than any other member of the committee. Our weekly check-ins became an opportunity for me to get to know Ms. Mark better and gain a deeper appreciation of her commitment and perspective. She was always able to push my thinking in ways that I had not previously considered. She was always able to make me see and hear the voices that were not necessarily at the table or in the room. She was always able to craft a piece of prose that made me most envious of her command of the English language. Reflective and eloquent leadership is something that should never be taken for granted, and I thank Ms. Mark for being such a wonderful example of this during my time as superintendent. On November 10, 1911, Andrew Carnegie would form the Carnegie Foundation for Scholarly and Charitable Works. It was he who stated, and I quote, "Do your duty and a little more, and the future will take care of itself," unquote. To Mr. Dranzak, Mr. Plane, and Ms. Mark, please know that your fine work has far exceeded your duty and that I am most grateful to have been superintendent when the members of this community charged you with the care, custody, and control of the East Greenwich Public Schools. The hours were long and the issues were before you, more often than not, complicated, not value-neutral, and required focus, understanding, and intellectual stamina that few outside of this work can even begin to comprehend. It was my honor and privilege to work with and learn from all of you, and I wish you all nothing but the best in your future endeavors. Congratulations and thanks on a job individually and collectively well done.
Thank you, Dr. Mercurio. Yes, absolutely. And then, you know, just one other thing, if you were here, we would be extending a gift to each of you. These gifts will show up at your doorstep at the end of this week, so look forward to that. Dr. Mercurio, as always, you've done, your words are profound and I appreciate them.
Pleasure. Thank you for giving me the opportunity, Madam Superintendent. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Mercurio. That really means a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Mercurio.
Dr. Mercurio, what a delightful surprise to see you this evening. What wonderful words. So grateful for your service to this district, for the opportunity that I had to serve with you and learn from you all these years. It's just, it's what a wonderful way to complete our term of service, to see you here again with us tonight. I just want to say, I, it has been such a joy and an honor to serve on this committee. My kids were still in middle school and just beginning high school when I, when I began my service, and I continue to be forever indebted to the East Greenwich Public Schools for the incredible education that my own children received and just for the opportunity to serve. I am so proud of the work that this committee has done over the years, and this particular committee, just within the last couple of years. This community has such incredibly dedicated, hard-working, and committed members of the committee who are not rotating off the committee this year, and we also have new committee members who I know are equally committed and ready to roll up their sleeves and get to work, and I just, I can't tell you how much it means to me to know that, that the committee is going to be in great hands. Again, I'm so proud of so much of the work that we've done, but I have to say, the single decision that I think I am most proud of in all of the years that I've been on the committee was our decision to hire Superintendent Meyer as our superintendent of schools. I've only had six months to work with you in this capacity, as I promised you six months ago. It's going to be a long six months, and so in some ways, it kind of feels like it's been a lifetime, but I, I have just been blown away by your, your dedication, your empathy, your grit, the, the example that you set in this community for, for just rolling up your sleeves and figuring things out and doing it with love and with, with, you know, keeping the kids foremost in your mind. It is by far the proudest decision, I feel like, I have made in my time on the committee. So, again, to Matt and to Jeff, I'll see you on the sidelines. It's been an honor to serve with you. And to everybody else on the committee, thank you for your ongoing service. This community is blessed to still have you onboard.
Nicely put and echo that sentiment. I'll just add that, Dr. Mercurio, you're hired to write my obituary, so, was that. It's been a pleasure and an honor. Thank you all for the opportunity. Carolyn and Jeff, I've learned so much from you. Thank you so much. For those of you remaining, I trust you with my children's education, and you're phenomenal people, you work hard, you zealously advocate on behalf of this district, and I know you're going to do an incredible job, and I can't wait to see the fine work you put forward. And that goes for you too, Mrs. Meyer, equally excited about your service to this district. Dr. Mercurio, it has been an honor. When I looked out the window of Cole Junior High, I thought maybe I would. I didn't know it'd be with a 1985 Hendrickson grad, but I'm sure glad it was. You're one of the all-time best. And to you, Counselor Oliverio, I've told you this before privately, I'd like to say it publicly, I have learned a tremendous amount about law. I've learned a tremendous amount about managing clients, including people like me, and I'm deeply indebted to you for your service now going on 16 years to this governing body, so thank you so much.
My pleasure.
I have to echo that because it has been such a pleasure, Counselor, to work with you over the years. I have also learned a tremendous amount from you and very much hope that we'll be able to stay in touch.
Of course, and I'll miss the three of you cycling off the school committee. So, thank you for all of your support and, and your guidance as well. So, we all do it for the kids. I'm not sure it's fair that I get to go last here, but to try to, you guys cover it all very well. It's been a privilege and I've really enjoyed getting to work with all of you, learned a ton of, just a ton about the schools and how is a group, we can work together and get a lot accomplished. And, Dr. Mercurio, when I, when I first came on, I thought I knew what went on behind the scenes, and I sincerely appreciate all that you showed me and taught me about what actually happens, and it made me a better school committee member and made me understand better what goes on in the community and hopefully be much more helpful to the town. And it really was an honor to get to hire Mrs. Meyer to replace you. Unfortunately, don't get, didn't get to work together for as long as it would have, would have been nice, but boy, we really, we really picked the right person for the right time too. This district is lucky with all that's gone on, that we were able to get that institutional knowledge and such a dedicated human being to, to the kids and to the district. And, and Matt and Carolyn, it, it has been interesting and fun and, you know, Matt and I got a, I think, a special deal that we also, having served with Michael Fain before as, as a few of the, I think, we think the only three graduates who've been on so far, so, you know, it's great to be able to come back to, to where we were. And I have no idea what I was thinking when I was looking out the Cole Middle School window, you know, that, but I definitely wasn't about being on the school committee. And Counselor Oliverio, I'd say the same, you know, we, I sincerely appreciate your efforts as well. Whenever we needed guidance, you really stepped in and helped us out. And I know Anne and Allison and Jean and Dr. McEwen will do a great job leading, leading the new group and making sure our kids are well taken care of. So, thank you to all the people who gave us that, this opportunity.
Thank you again, all, and Dr. Mercurio especially for joining us this evening. Much appreciated.
A pleasure. Thank you for having me.
All right, well, I guess we have a meeting to continue, so we will go ahead and do so. The next item on the agenda is public comment. This is the part of our agenda where any member of the public who has a comment or a concern that they would like to express is welcome to do so. If it's regarding an item that is further down on the agenda, then I've asked for you to hold it until then, but otherwise, I will go ahead and recognize any hands that I see up, and I see that we have our Senator Bridget Belverde with us this evening. Welcome, Senator.
Hello there, everyone. I'm so happy to be here with you briefly. I just wanted to, following up all of the words of appreciation that were, were shared for our outgoing school committee members, I just wanted to join in the chorus. Rep. Caldwell could not make it to the call tonight, so, so I'll be expressing her deep gratitude for all of the thousands of hours that you three have put in over the years that you've served the East Greenwich community. I think it's, so many people can, it's easy to take for granted and underestimate the value of a truly engaged school committee with members that are so dedicated to their community and their schools and their students. So, just wanted to say thank you and, and hope to keep in touch in the future.
Thank you so much, Senator. Much appreciated.
All right, take care.
Thank you. And we have Counselor Cornthal with us this evening. Good evening, Counselor.
Hi. This is the first time I'm doing this from my phone, but.
It's working.
Oh, good. I too wanted to thank you so much for all of your hard work and effort, and, you know, it's, it's, I know how much time it takes to do what you do and how much all of you care, and I, I really appreciate it and I've enjoyed working with you, you know, not too long, but I've enjoyed working with you, and I wish you the best of luck in whatever you do next, and the, the town owes you a deep debt of gratitude, but just thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Counselor Cornthal, and I just want to thank you personally for your support of the East Greenwich Schools and to thank all of your fellow counselors over these last couple of years. It has been really amazing to have a supportive council, and, and I know that we've all been very grateful, and I especially, as Chair of the committee, have appreciated the support that we've received from the council, so thank you.
Sure, thanks.
Is he another hand, Elizabeth? Thank you so much for that, Elizabeth. Thank you. So, public comment is still open, if there are any other members of the public who have a comment or a concern that they would like to share with us this evening. Seeing none, we will move along. Next, we have approval of minutes, but we have no minutes to approve this evening, so we will move right along to our action items. Our first action item this evening is to accept a retirement of Mrs. Di Miglio effective December 31st. You all should have received a letter in her packet. I will entertain a motion to accept her retirement.
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Plane. Seconded by Dr. Quinn. Roll call vote, please.
Allison Powell.
Hi.
Anne Musella.
Hi.
Carolyn Mark.
Hi.
Jean Quinn.
Hi.
Jeff Dranzak.
Hi.
Lori McEwen.
Hi.
Matt Plane.
The eyes have it, and I do hope that the future committee will find an opportunity to honor Mrs. Di Miglio on her retirement at a later date and thank her for her service. Next, we have approval to enter into fee negotiations with Studio Jade for architectural services for, for a RIDE Stage Two application. Ms. Powell, would you like to say a couple of words about this?
Sure. So, as we discussed previously, we submitted a Stage One application to RIDE on September 15th, so now we're moving into Stage Two to get approval of, I think it's 8.7 million of other deferred maintenance projects. Part of that process is to hire architectural services to help us complete that application. So, we put out an RFQ with the assistance of Colliers. We had several responses, and last week, we, the facilities committee held interviews with all of them, and through a scoring matrix and a series of discussions, decided to select Studio Jade in partnership with Brewster Thornton to move forward with the Stage Two. So, what we're asking for tonight is just the approval of this committee to move forward with fee negotiations. Since it was an RFQ and not an RFP, we picked on qualifications and fit versus price, so now we'd like to move into the price portion of that negotiation.
Great. With that, I will entertain a motion to approve this action item.
So moved.
So moved by Ms. Powell. Seconded by Mr. Dranzak. Discussion. Ms. Musella.
Thank you. Just a quick question. It looks like one of the architects is a member of the town planning board. Are there any, does he or does anyone need to seek an advisory from the Ethics Commission just to, to move forward on this?
Was it Nate?
Ginsberg.
Ginsberg?
Yes.
Yeah, so I think that has already been completed and Colliers took care of it, but I will confirm, and if not, that will be part, obviously, of negotiation if there's any issue with that, but those are questions are usually handled in the RFQ process. Because every one of, just for full disclosure, every one of the architectural firms that applied has a resident of East Greenwich who would be on the team. So, we do this on sort of our routine basis, but I will make sure that there is no conflict.
I assumed, I assumed it would have been thought of. I just wanted to mention it since I just.
Thank you. No, I did that. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor of approval to enter into fee negotiations with Studio Jade signify by saying aye via roll call vote.
Allison Powell.
Hi.
Anne Musella.
Hi.
Carolyn Mark.
Hi.
Jean Quinn.
Hi.
Jeff Dranzak.
Hi.
Lori McEwen.
Hi.
Matt Plane.
Hi.
The eyes have it. Thank you. Next, you have several homeschool requests before you, two for Grade One and one for Grade Two. I'll entertain a motion to approve these homeschool requests.
So moved.
So moved.
So moved by, was that Dr. McEwen, seconded by Ms. Musella?
Sure.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye via roll call vote.
Allison Powell.
Hi.
Anne Musella.
Hi.
Carolyn Mark.
Hi.
Jean Quinn.
Hi.
Jeff Dranzak.
Hi.
Lori McEwen.
Hi.
Matt Plane.
Hi.
The eyes have it. Thank you. And that brings us to reports of the superintendent and staff, so I will turn it over to Superintendent Meyer.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Arnoff, if you would be kind enough to put up the brief presentation. Thank you very much. Again, good evening, members of the school committee, the members of public that are in attendance. I'd like to take this opportunity to welcome our new staff, you know, as we've started this new tradition because you, the school committee no longer approves appointments, but this is an opportunity for you to hear of our new staff members and formally welcome them to our district. So, Kristen Biafor is joining us at the high school as a special educator. Caroline Grenadier, a graduate of East Greenwich, is a Grade One Frenchtown element, at Elementary, at Frenchtown Elementary. She's a one-year-only at this time. Rachel Jacobs is a paraprofessional joining us at Frenchtown Elementary School. We're pleased to have Beth Majica join us as preschool coordinator at Meadowbrook. She started this week. And Janet Petrone is a special educator at Archie Cole Middle School. She's a one-year-only, and I'd like to formally welcome the staff to East Greenwich, and thanks for coming along for the ride with us. Next slide, please. Okay, on the next slide, we have Mr. Willmarth, who's going to provide a little bit of an update, especially around the HVAC analysis and, and some of the contact with the Education Operations Center, the EDOC, and the portable HEPA filters. So, if you would be so kind enough as to promote him, Dr. Arnoff.
He has been promoted.
Mr. Willmarth?
Because I can't see.
Yes, he's muted.
Okay.
Hello, everybody.
Hello, Mr. Willmarth.
So, yes, we've had a couple of conversations with the EDOC, and they were able to provide us with a calculator to use in order to calculate the collect ventilation rates for our individual classrooms on an individual basis per occupancy. So, that's come in pretty helpful here as the weather has gotten a little bit colder to ensure that we're providing the correct amount of ventilation for each of the educational spaces, and that's based on a CO2 counts, and with a couple of CO2 meters that we purchased, we've been able to go around and test a fair amount of the classrooms to ensure that those readings are what we expect them to be and better, and we conducted one of our first tests on one of the coldest days last week or the week before, and all of the results were favorable, so that's good. In addition, we've been in, talking with the EDOC, and they're providing us 250 HEPA filters, which should be enough for every classroom, and those are able to provide an additional four air changes an hour to each classroom that, that'll then be HEPA-filtered. So, even if we had the heating system ventilation off and the windows closed, we'd still be meeting the RIDOH guidelines for the healthy air for the COVID-19 precautions.
Thanks, thanks, Mr. Willmarth. I'll pause here in case anybody. Thanks. Thanks, Mr. Willmarth. I'll pause here in case anybody has any questions. Any of the members of the school committee have any questions for Mr. Willmarth around the in the calculation that he is doing. I will say that the HEPA filters is not at an expense to the district. The HEPA filters are being provided by the state of Rhode Island. All right, I think we are good. Not seeing any questions. Okay. Thanks. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Have a great night.
For all your, for all your hard work. It's appreciated. Okay, next slide. And the next part of my superintendent's report this evening is around the thing that is so prominent before us every day. And that's, you know, the response in collaboration with the Rhode Island Department of Health with regard to positive cases. So this slide comes from the playbook that I've regularly attached to most communications, but you know, there's, you know, two tiers, if you will, of when something is a probable case. And this describes that any new cough, shortness of breath, difficulty breathing, or new loss of taste or smell. Or two of the following. You know, fever, chills, muscle aches, headaches, sore throat, nausea or vomiting, diarrhea, fatigue, or congestion and running nose. So if you have one of the symptoms on the left or two of the symptoms on the right, that means that you should have proceed with testing. So next, next page, next slide, please. So, and this is interesting and important. What is the infection period, infectious period for COVID-19? For symptomatic cases, it's two days prior to symptom onset with 10 days after symptom onset. So the 48 hours prior to symptoms starting are a metric that the Rhode Island Department of Health is using to determine who may or may not have to quarantine. In an asymptomatic situation, it is two days prior to the date of of testing. And then until eight day, you know, the 10 days after the date of testing. Should that, in both cases, when they are positive. Okay, next slide, please. Who's a close contact? So individuals that have been within six feet with or without a face mask for at least 15 minutes. That is cumulative 15 minutes. So if you had two 10-minute interactions during the day. Or individuals that have unprotected direct contact with a person that is infectious. You know, if somebody should cough directly in somebody's face, that would be really a concerning situation and considered a close contact. Next slide. So how is the case investigation process supposed to work? And that's important terminology I'm using here. So typically, RIDO would receive a result of a positive case and then in turn contact the individual and the school. And then when the investigator calls, they'll ask about, you know, symptoms, exposures, determine who are close contacts. The case investigator will make a determination about who should isolate. And then the case investigator calls close contacts to put them in quarantine. It's important to note that Rhode Island Department of Health is the only body that has the authority to quarantine folks. And up until this point, any directive that has been given to us from the Rhode Island Department of Health, when we've had the opportunity to get that guidance, we have followed completely. We have not, as we've said from the beginning, we have never not cooperated with them or followed their guidance. So the next slide. So what, what is the reality of the situation? And in fact, there was a meeting today with staff from the Rhode Island Department of Health and the Rhode Island Superintendent's Association. And, you know, it's very clear that they are unable to handle the demand. It's just an overwhelming situation that they are in and they are trying to rectify that situation. Most of recent, you know, we learn in the district of cases directly from the people. And contact with Rhode Island Department of Health in the last two weeks has, you know, been at us trying to reach them. They did report today that they've hired 60 new case investigators and they are training 36 more. They are developing new systems, creating regions, creating points of contact, which is very helpful. And relying on the districts at this point to at least gather the appropriate information that they need. So I'm happy to report that I was able to have a very good contact was established today for our district and for me with somebody that brings a lot of expertise to the table and can guide us through all of this. But, you know, most districts are having to make decisions on their own in the absence of it while they wait for Rhode Island Department of Health guidance. So if you have information at nine o'clock at night that, you know, you have a positive case in a school, wherever that may be with a staff or a student, you know, the district may have to make a decision that, you know, students will learn remotely until we get some guidance. And, you know, in every case, you know, we will always act out of an abundance of caution to make sure that our students and our staff are safe. And that, that's a little bit of a summary of where we are. Next slide, please. Dr. Arnoff. Transportation. I had this in my field memo this week and I just wanted to repeat it again. We do have some space available on our buses. Again, you know, my gratitude to the transportation committee who did, which is no longer in existence, but did all of the background work for this. If somebody wishes to submit a request, they can through, do it through the transportation request form, even if you've already submitted it. And you can find that on the district website. Again, we are limited to, you know, only 36 students on the bus. So, you know, we, you know, what we'll do is we'll try to make determinations based on what requests come in, if we're over capacity. And then just a recent update on the windows on the bus. So every other, every other bus window should be open roughly one inch. Prior to that, it was every window was open and the kiddos were pretty uncomfortable riding when it, when it was very cold. So they adjusted that guidance on October 30th. And, and, you know, it really has, transportation has gone smoothly, I'm pleased to report. And then the next slide was for food service. So the meals program has been extended through the June 30th, 2021. So that means that every student in the district has access to free meals until June 30th of next year. Distance, for students that are distance learners, those meals are available daily from 11:30 to 12:30 at both Frenchtown and Eldridge. And then weekend meals are available as well on Fridays. That should have said all students, that should have said Eldridge and Frenchtown as well. That's my mistake. But parents can pick up meals at those locations as well, in the same places where the distance learning is distributed. But frozen meals are distributed on the weekend, so families can have weekend meals. And Mrs. Edwards is reporting, you know, she, you know, folks are taking advantage of that, which is really wonderful. And that finishes that part of my superintendent's report. If we have any questions and then we'll go on to the SBA.
Would you like to go back and do the school committee transition?
Oh, did you skip that slide? That would be good because I believe that the school committee would like to be made aware of that. Thank you, Dr. Arnoff. So in the week of 11/16, the Board of Elections is going to, will work on the recounts. And then a meeting will be held on the 30th to certify the election. In speaking with Ms. Carney, the swearing in at this time is to be determined. And Councilor Oliverio and I spoke today and he will be conducting an orientation for new members. But I, you know, I don't anticipate, based on what Ms. Carney said, that the election will be certified before the 30th of November. Hence my earlier comment.
Understood. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions regarding, you know, that piece of it, Ms. Powell?
I just, in your update, when you were talking about the state hiring more resources to help with contact tracing, but that they are expecting school districts to take on some of that responsibility. I just wanted to make sure that you have all the resources you need to be able to do that effectively and make those decisions. So that we're not having to do big whole shutdowns if that's not what you think is in the best interest of the district.
I appreciate that, Ms. Powell. I appreciate that. You know, making, you know, without guidance from them, because, you know, Rhode Island Department of Health is the, is the body that makes that determination. They're asking folks to collect information so that when they do get to it, that information is readily available. However, in the absence of them being able to guide us in the moment when we hear, hear of a positive case, we are being forced to make a decision in the short term.
Do you have a reason you need to collect the data that they're asking for, like efficiently without it taxing other things?
In terms of, you know, the seating charts and all of that information, that's ready. We're prepared with all of that. That's ready, readily available. The issue is the actual contact from them.
Yeah. And can I interject on that? Because if I may, I know Superintendent Meyer and I spoke this morning before she had the RISA meeting. And I'll just be very candid. She expressed concern and reservation that the Department was of health was imposing requirements on superintendents of the, the school districts in the state. And other superintendents were expressing some dismay about that. And my reaction to that was, look, we're in the business of educating. We are not in the business of engaging in wholesale contact tracing. So I don't, we didn't speak after the meeting, Alexis. So I don't know what was discussed during the meeting. But I do, I think that we need to follow up with Department of Health and the commissioner. And, and, you know, let it be known that it's, I don't think that the district should be put in the position of doing the work of the Department of Health. That is taxing our resources. If the Department of Health cannot provide those resources, how can they expect a small school district to undertake those functions? I mean, I find that astounding. So I don't know what, maybe you can, you can fill the committee in on what was discussed at the RISA meeting and maybe that will allay some of the concerns. I don't know.
What was, thank you, Councilor Oliverio. What was discussed at the meeting was, it was concerned. You very well captured how folks were feeling. You know, superintendents and principals are not, don't have expertise in health, you know, public health and what and whatnot should constitute, you know, a close contact or who should not attend school. And I think that message was heard loud and clearly by the folks from the Rhode Island Department of Health. They are trying to, you know, with all due respect for their work. And I mean, they, they are working very hard trying to do this, but they are the folks that make the determinations. And, you know, from the beginning, and Ms. Powell, you, I thought about you this morning when I was at that meeting, you know, the first thing we said in our reopening plan that our first priority was the health and safety of our students and our staff. And we have to keep that in mind. And if there's any question whatsoever, when we learn of a case in the absence of direction from the Rhode Island Department of Health or even contact, we have to wait until we hear from them and have them weigh in on what we should or should not do. And you will see that many school districts are having to do the same thing. When you start to see, you know, this district is closing for two days, the high school and the middle school or that school. That's, that's why that is happening. There's no time for the Rhode Island Department of Health to do their work.
Oh, no. And, and that I completely understand. And my, my question was more in line with what Councilor Oliverio just said. It seems quite taxing on the district to have to, you know, be basically assisting the Rhode Island Department of Health in their, in their work. And so it was more to make sure that at least on your end, whatever it is, you would need to provide, you had everything you needed. So at least that piece was taken care of with the understanding that, you know, they make the ultimate decision and we still have to wait for them. But at least, you know, you have what you need on your end. So, but thank you. I appreciate that.
Sorry, cut to unmute here. I just wanted to thank superintendent for including the detail on the new hires in the report. I think with, you know, with the formal approval of the school committee no longer required, I think it's good that we have a public acknowledgement of when new people are hired and just to welcome them aboard and also again to have this in the, in the public record. Thank you.
Ms. Musella.
Just a quick question. And again, thank you for all of this. A quick bus question. I know that there have been a few classrooms that have had to quarantine, a couple anyway. Certainly two at Hanaford because I'm more aware of that. Have there been any students that have had to them, have had to look at busloads and quarantining beyond the classroom and busloads and that contact tracing is working with Ocean State? That's all going the way it's supposed to go?
It is, Ms. Musella. You will be pleased to see those seating charts coming our way.
Right. Thank you.
And I can, I'm happy to report that Mr. Seager took a bus ride with, on one of the buses to check it out. And I've done similar visits on the buses.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Shall we move on to the the SBA Capital Fund project? So you, I'm, I'm pleased to report that I've seen that you have, some of you have placed your signature on DocuSign. That was the first time we've tried that and it seems to have gone smoothly. This is just on the agenda because you will apply your signature should you agree to this SBA Capital Fund project. And essentially, you're just agreeing to the funds being used as described in the document that you have before you. And, and for the, for the record, the district is receiving $24,837 in essentially aid that is coming our way. So every little bit will, will, will help. And I don't believe we have to take a vote. I just wanted to mention this on the record and let you know that the DocuSign was coming your way.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And that concludes my report.
Wonderful. Well, that then takes us to our teaching and learning topic for this evening. And I believe we have Mr. Pajaza with us.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening. Welcome.
Thank you so much. Thank you for the opportunity to present to you this evening regarding two real aspects. One is an overarching aspect in terms of a draft reporting revision cycle for the district, as well as then turn it over to Ms. Mary Ann Crudell and Mr. Neil Marcaccio to talk about specifics regarding the lower elementary and some of the changes that they would like to make to this year's report cards. This is actually an exciting thing for me to present in that it's a, it's one, it's a piece of the, under normal circumstances, or it's a really, again, a piece of the, the normal educational work that we're striving to do. And amidst the global pandemic, it just, it's a, it's a taste of, of a little bit of what our teachers are and educators are doing in the classroom. So it's my honor to report out here tonight. I'm putting forward this reporting cycle, revision cycle in addition to all of the work that still needs to get done in terms of a regular curriculum revision cycle, in terms of the work that still needs to be done in terms of our overarching grading policy that really needs to talk about the when and the why and the how of our, of our grade, of our grading and our grading reporting. But really, this is an important document to, I think, really honor the, a lot of the work that has been done. But really, this is an important document to, I think, really honor the a lot of the work that has been done. A lot of the work that is is currently still in process, as well as that work, especially in terms of regards to the vision of the graduate and the future curriculum work, the work that needs to be done. And this cycle puts us on a perpetual cycle where we implement, iterate, improve, and then continue once again. And we kind of continue along that cycle, which is something that I know that we as the district strive to do, whether it's in a formal promulgation of a cycle or or not. So what this cycle proposes is that in lower elementary that they roll out a new reporting mechanism. And the thinking behind this is really that they're in currently in year two of their their new curriculum implementation that is more systemic in the elementary grades than in the secondary grades, especially when we group the middle school and the high school together. So realistically, this reflects the year two of the EL curriculum that they've been rolling out. And then while the upper elementary is in year one, they will develop and continue to look at some of the work that has been done in terms of report card revisions this year and really look at it through a lens of what they experience in terms of the new curriculum, in terms of EL, as well as the curricular resources that they have. While secondary is continuing to investigate in just in terms of English language, where they continue to investigate study sync as well as the curricular resources that are there. Again, this is a really a it's plotted out as a five-year cycle, but really, it's a three-year cycle where we look to really have the first year of implementation and then come back in with a year in year two where we might do some tweaking in the second year. But then it's really those in in terms of the goal is that we would really want to wait until year three to do a fully systemic and take a look at are there new standards? Are there new accreditation? Or is there new major thinking? And a three-year cycle allows us to do that. Also, in this cycle, it would allow us, because we are still in the midst of a global pandemic, and our ability to bring together large cohorts of people to engage in really heavy lifts of systemic work. It honors where we are right now, and it allows us to, while not putting off perpetually, it allows us to start thinking about that vision of graduate work and laying the foundation and letting people know that while we are implementing something new, we are iterating, and there is still more work to be done and gives a clear defined timeline for that. What it also does is that it hopefully also again allows us for the vision of our graduate articulation as well as that grading policy that I referred to earlier of the when, the why, and the how of what we're grading and why and how it's being done. And it also lends itself to and the upcoming Niaske accreditation visit and allows that feedback to come down to us so that we can act upon it. And it's something that is actionable and supportive. Additionally, it also allows us to give, quite frankly, some budget considerations to some of these. We have the we we don't know where the state's budget is. We do also, we do know that there are regulations in terms of the adoption and purchase of high-quality curricular materials that we do want to make sure that we are giving to our educators and that we are accurately reporting on. And then last but not least, we want to make sure that we have embedded in a secular nature within the budget the ability to digitize and communicate effectively within our student information system or within whatever we are grade reporting system, putting into a cycle leading with the lower elementary, followed by the upper elementary, then followed again by the secondary, including middle and high school together, allows us those opportunities to get those ducks in a row as well as increase the capacity of not only where we are right now in terms of human capacity, but also also fiscal capacity. We can build that with the cycle occurring over three years. So that is what I have drafted in terms of in terms of teaching and learning for the district in terms of reporting out or making refinements to the report cards. Again, it is not about are we going to standardize? Are we going to percentages? Are we changing a what? You know, that that's really, you know, some of the more heavy lifting of the grading policies that will be coming down the pike. But that is what I'm proposing for all schools in the district to align to and would am very happy to reintroduce Mrs. Mary Ann Crudell and Mr. Neil Marcaccio to present to you really the the real specifics of where we are for this year and the revisions that they've made already, the specific details of the history, their thinking behind it, and probably most importantly, educationally, the power standards that are embedded into this into this report card that really reflect an accurate representation of what we want our students to know and be able to do and where they're at right now. So probably the longest preamble in in grading revision or report card revision history, but I'll be happy to take any questions. And if there are none, or I can wait until after Mrs. Crudell and Mr. Marcaccio present, I would turn it over to them for specifics about this year's and their report card changes that they would like to implement.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the committee, Superintendent Meyer and Assistant Superintendent Mr. Pajaza. I would like to thank you for having us tonight. I am going to default to Mr. Marcaccio due to aggravating laryngitis that can be unpleasant over time to listen to. I would just like to add one extension to what Assistant Superintendent Meyer had specified. We have been two years into our curriculum revision process, but the reality is Frenchtown and Meadowbrook have been working collaboratively with their faculty and staff since 2016 on the identification of the revised wording for our report cards to be reflective of the standards in which we guide all our work. So curriculum has been vibrant for the last two years, but the discussion around standardized wording in our report cards has been tossed around and vetted for the last four years. So we're excited to present this tool, and I would like to defer to Mr. Marcaccio at this time.
You're muted, Mr. Marcaccio. You'll have to start again.
I'm gonna have to start again. I was I was just recognizing you, Mrs. Mark. So now, before we get started, I did want to take a moment and just recognize Mrs. Mark, Mr. Dranzak, and Mr. Plain. It has really been an honor to work for you, to work with you, and I've really enjoyed learning from all of you over the past years. Thank you for your tremendous service. You will be missed.
Thank you for that.
So we are here to talk to you this evening about sort of an an evolution and a substantial revision to our existing reporting instrument. So Mrs. Crudell and I and, you know, the staff at Frenchtown and Meadowbrook have actually been in the process of working through a standards-based reporting instrument for a couple of years now. You know, there's been kind of an extended process. It was halted last year under COVID, and we've sort of come to the conclusion that we need an interim instrument that is reflective of all of the great things that are happening in our schools every day. So, Ms. Dr. Arnoff, if you would advance the slide. So just a brief history to kind of tell you where we've been and where we are. You know, in 2012, we adopted Common Core, and since then, we have had eight years of alignment, eight years of evolution in curricula, eight years of evolution in teaching and learning. And I think, you know, it's important to recognize that there's been this shift from teacher-centered to student-centric teaching and learning. And again, I think we need an instrument that is reflective of what is happening every day in our classrooms. We've had eight years of evolution in pedagogy for our educators. And we've had eight years of evolution in standards-based assessment. It is 2020, and we are still using a reporting instrument that dates dates back 20-plus years. We have teachers that have 30-plus-year-old children in our buildings that had the same report card when they were at Meadowbrook and Frenchtown. So that either means there were, it was very progressive, or perhaps that it's time for change. And I did mention a little bit about our prior work going back to 2018. So we have, you know, we've had the teachers involved in reviewing various elements of standards-based report cards and reporting standards-based teaching and grading practices. You know, we've done book studies, and there's been a lot of work that's gone into our general standards-based practices. Okay, Dr. Arnoff. So all of you have received this 2021 revised instrument. Again, it is highly reflective of our current standards and our current curricula, our teaching and learning practices, and more importantly, it's it's reflective that the integration of all of these things and also of the soft skills and learner qualities that are so important today. So I think about our vision of a graduate work and our deeper learning work here in the district, and it's truly at the K to two level. It's a whole child approach to assessment and grading. Okay, Dr. Arnoff. So we really, we've, in a lot of this really reflects the current climate that we're in now. You know, last year, we really struggled. Once we started distance learning, the work sort of went off the rails with regard to the the progression of our standards-based reporting work. And we decided we really needed to come up with something that was going to work as an interim instrument because it is just time for change. So we started to do a lot of focus-based work on power standards and alignment of power standards and the streamlining of our existing curricula to be highly reflective of those power standards. So, for example, our EL curricula, we are doing a modified version of that this year that really responds well to the pivots and learning models and, you know, perhaps the inevitable pivot to distance learning. Let's hope that does not happen again. And these power standards are standards that have endurance, leverage, and readiness. And it's really important to think of them as sort of a spiraling vertical philosophy. So you will see reflective in a 12th grade math standard, things that you see in a first grade standard along the same lines. So my and it also incorporates the power standards incorporate a lot of the common practices that are embedded across like our standards for mathematical practices. But again, it's that vertical alignment. Those, that's how we identify our power standards. And it's also important to recognize that not every every district and every every school, for that matter, sees the same standards as important as power standards. But we have identified the ones that are most important to our various curricula. And these are embedded in our math ELA and SEL. And again, back to that climate alignment piece. You know, our students and our educators are operating under conditions that are, you know, nothing, it's nothing short of miraculous that the things that are happening currently and happening every day are happening. So we needed a simple instrument that would allow them to report accurately and report in a way that's reflective of all of the current practices that are happening, but it needed to be simple, flexible, and adaptable. So I think all of you, the members of the school committee, have had a chance to review this instrument. I think you were provided with a copy of it. This is page one. This is a grade two sample. And I think you were provided with grade one, two, and also our kindergarten report reporting instrument or report card. And with kindergarten in particular, it's important to recognize that this revised instrument actually reflects four quarters of reporting, which is part of our grading policy here in Sprendage. We had been doing three quarters of reporting for the past 20-plus years. And we we really moved towards, you know, a rubric and an evaluation key that again is reflective of what is used across the state, what is incorporated in all of the high quality and embedded formative and summative assessments that are used with those curricula. And we put a lot of focus too into making sure that the soft skills that were reflected in the report card were also in alignment, not only with the STL standards here in Rhode Island, but also the National Castle standards. So that's actually, that's on the next page. But I'm happy to answer questions or go through this piece by piece. Certainly, one of the other things you need to know is when you have a power standards-based reporting instrument, you're not going to see all of the standards for each grade level. Our expanded instrument that is still in process is reflective of many of those additional standards. But what you will find here is a lot of them are embedded and incorporated into those power standards. So the way they're worded, they grab some of the supporting standards-based language and the most important ones. We also focused on our itinerants, which on the old reporting instrument, there really was nothing that was even reflective of the great work and standards that are in place for those itinerants. I worked today and I had a discussion with our PE teacher, put together this wonderful video for our multiple open houses, and he went into great detail about, you know, his current curriculum and how it is reflective of the national standards for physical education. And when you look at the old reporting instrument that we had, you know, there was like a checkmark for sportsmanship and another one for effort, and that really was the the crux of, you know, the marking for physical education. So there's a progression here too for our itinerants, and I think that's worth noting. I again, I see, expect to see this expanded. And I really, I look at these reporting instruments. I know Mrs. Crudell looks at them as sort of these living, breathing documents, sort of like our curricula. Nothing is carved in stone, and we expect them to evolve along a progression and a continuum over time. And then you've got the comment boxes down there at the bottom. And you know, what what really started to happen with the old instrument is our educators ended up writing these long extended narratives for every quarter because the instrument that they had been using was not reflective of anything they were doing or how they were doing it. And we ended up with these very long-running, you know, Google documents, anecdotal documents for each child, and those documents incorporated in narrative form, a lot of the things that you see here in this document. So again, I think it's going to be a simpler, more straightforward way to give the accurate reporting of what's happening every day for our children. You know, and I think, you know, the other thing that's worth talking about is, and I I know, Dr. McEwan, you had asked about the rubric that goes along with this, and this will be incorporated into that instrument. That was an omission on my part going into sending that packet off. And again, this 4-3-2-1 rubric is is highly reflective of what the state is using in alignment with all of the high-quality curriculum adoption that's happening by 2023 and 2024, depending on content area. And we're also going to kind of be back mapping and doing a lot of work with our vision of graduate. And that you will find that a lot of what is defined in the knowledgeable, connected, reflective, and competent elements of our vision of a graduate work is also reflected, particularly in the soft skills, the page two of our revised reporting instrument that we're asking you to review and approve this evening, or at least move towards approving. And Mrs. Crudell and I would be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Great. Well, thank you so much for that. I know it's the culmination of a tremendous amount of work. So thank you to you and to your staff. I'll open it up to the committee for questions. Dr. McEwan?
I think I have more comments than questions, so I don't need to have these answered tonight. There there are things to think about. First, the language of the rubric around like exceeds expectations, those kinds of things. I'm just wondering about the, I have wonderings. Again, these don't need to be answered, but wonderings about the appropriateness of that around the SEL standards in particular, the social emotional learning standards. So sharing feelings appropriately, for example. No matter what, let me step back a little bit. No matter what rubric we use, I think to have corresponding documentation that is on our website that goes to parents so that there's an understanding of what each of these means. So the rubric of exceeds expectations, meets, et cetera, still doesn't dig into what sharing feelings appropriately looks like in kindergarten, first grade, second grade. Similarly, I could say the same about the standard, the content level standards. Some of them are, you know, specific counts to tell the number of objects in in kindergarten. But as we go up the grade levels, and we start to think about, you know, algebraic thinking and those kinds of things. There may be some, as you get into the older grades in particular, where a parent reading the language of the standard still doesn't quite understand what it is that my child will know and be able to do. And so one of the things I know I've recommended here before one of the things I know I've recommended here before is that all of our curriculum documents, all of our curricula for every single grade level include an explanation of the power standards for our students. And I, I'm just throwing this out there. Of course, the, the, our entire committee may agree or disagree. These are just some thoughts I had. But that it includes exactly what it looks, what the standards are, what it means, some illustrative examples. And I have I can share with you offline exactly what I'm thinking about if that's not making sense. But I, my overarching point was I'm not sure that the rubric itself in all of these cases lets parents really understand what it means to get that proficient or exceeds and what they might be able to do to help support their child or understand where their child is. And this may be one of my last, I've got two, I think, more comments, three. First, love the endurance readiness leverage. We may, that may be something else that we want to explain to parents why we've chosen these particular power standards and why they matter. Another comment would be a wondering around a student self assessment component for any one of these and whether or not these standards are written as I can statements. So for our students to be empowered and fully engaged in their learning, to be able to say, I can count X, Y, Z. I can share my feelings appropriately. That they learn, they pinpoint their own level of proficiency. And often we see that students of all ages are either very accurate in that self assessment or sort of grade themselves, for lack of a better term, under where the, the teacher or their peers might, and it can be a very empowering experience for learners of all ages. Kindergarteners can do that. So I wonder about whether or not we could include that. And then finally, this is just a complete aside. The word itinerants, just, I don't, there's some thing about, I wonder how, it just doesn't feel overly respectful to me about the hard work that people do. They're not just roaming through the building, and I know that that's something people. It's either that or it's subject areas or some other, you know, some other expression that I think we all admire and appreciate their work, but the title doesn't necessarily reflect that. I think that's it for me now.
Thank you, Dr. McEwan. Other comments or questions from members of the committee, Ms. Powell?
My comment or question really builds on something that Dr. McEwan just said. That in, you know, explaining more to parents of exactly what all of these mean. One of the things she said was describing to parents how they can help support their child, depending on how this evaluative tool comes out. And, you know, my specific question was especially in this, what you're on the soft skills. Because I think parents know when they see, well, my child might not be reading at grade level. Maybe they need speech, maybe they need a reading tutor. Similarly with math, but if my child can't actively listen, what do I do? If my, because I'm not sure our parents always either have those skills or know how to go about getting that support for their child. So I think especially as we're trying to build in social emotional learning into the modules and into skills block. And as we're trying to have much more standards based descriptive, you know, evaluative tool for, for parents to know how their children are doing, I think especially in those areas, including not just a just more a broader description, but also if you feel like your child is struggling, not just have that parent teacher conference, but maybe some real concrete ways to support your child. I, I know it would be helpful for me as a parent. I think it would probably be helpful for a lot of parents and I know you have all of that and it would be great. To, to see some of that. So, and thank you for all of this work because I know this is a complete overhaul and so much has gone into it and I really I appreciate it and I'm excited about this new tool. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to go to Ms. Misella and then I'll go back to Dr. McEwan.
Thank you. Just briefly, sorry, I didn't see Dr. McEwan's. I just want to express an appreciation for the willingness to take the sort of interim step. Recognizing that, you know, as, as Mr. Pedraza said, and as we've discussed, and we're discussing the grading policy, and that's a heavy lift and involves many stakeholders and all that. But, but being willing to take that interim step to get us closer to, to up to date and up to speed, and I think that's important. So I just really appreciate that, that that's what this is and, and that there's, there's, there's further development. So thank you.
Thank you for that. Dr. McEwan?
Yes, I think I'm echoing, and then I promise if I have other sort of little things, I will just share those offline, I promise. But kind of echoing what Ms. Powell was sharing and something that Ms. Misella might bring up that came up from our policy committee meeting, we're really what I see here is you know, this attempt to open up the black box of education, to bring parents in, to help them see what happens in a classroom, what should be, what could be for their students. To that end, this is this is a wondering, and again, if you don't have a solid answer on this, we could come back to it. One of the issues that we have with standards based grading is that there, some of our power standards, many of them are meant to be year long standards. And that can be in our content standards or our social. And so a way to convey to parents and in, and all communities, but often a high performing community like East Greenwich, it's important for parents to know if we're evaluating students on a yearly basis for a year long power standard. To be making progress in quarter one or quarter two may be exactly where the child should be. Also, you know, to sort of make parents aware in some way, shape or form where their expectation is for students at a certain place. So often folks will say our expectation for any of these are that students will not have fully mastered it until. And so parents understand sort of how close their children are getting to that. Other folks block things out and just report quarterly. And I would say that's, to Ms. Powell's point, that's especially important around these, these social emotional standards. There's no good or bad. So exceeding or making progress or not quite being there yet isn't good or bad. We're on this continuum of it and that, so the I guess bottom line is the more explanation we can give parents and students themselves upfront, the better we can all interpret the report cards, and that will bode well as we move forward into the secondary. You know, if in fact we keep on this trajectory of going towards standards based or mastery based learning. These comments will always make sense. These numbers will always make sense to people because we'll have given them all of that other preamble.
Yeah, and just to respond briefly to some of that, you know, I, I think you're, you're spot on, you know, with, with the comments and the questions. And I think, you know, it's important, I think, to for everyone to know that if we did nothing to front load and share information with parents and started this instrument this quarter. We'd still be in a better spot than we are with the existing one and trying to align it with what's happening. That is not, of course, not our intention. There will be an introductory letter that covers a lot of the elements that you have referred to this evening. I think it's also important to take a look at page two of the instrument. There's a different reporting scale for those learner qualities. And we deliberately did that, I think, for the, for the same, for the, for the very reasons that were mentioned. And I think it's important that we establish both, you know, examples and exemplars and definitions for all of these elements. And I think you know, our educators have had eight years of professional learning around standards based education and our parents have, you know, they have you know, by default been a part of that process, but we really do need some deliberate professional learning for our families to be able to understand how all of these pieces work and that, you know, that's part of the continuum that we've been talking about and Mr. Pedraza has been talking about. You know, the student self assessment piece is an important one. I see working backwards from our vision of a graduate work too, and in building portfolios K to twelve. You know, I really would like our students, even in kindergarten, to be able to produce exemplars relative to all of, you know, reflective, not only the power standards, but also our, you know, our portrait of our vision of a graduate work. All of the deeper learning competencies and related that are embedded in that. And then, you know, we certainly do put our standards into kid friendly language in the classroom. You know, perhaps they should be listed that way even on their report card. You know, so parents can review it that way with their students. That definitely has some potential. It's something we did come across in a couple of examples that we have on file. That's certainly up for discussion. Thinking about it now, I kind of like that, providing we can get the full message across the families. You know, and I, and I agree with you particularly that progression across the year. Well, why isn't my child a four quarter one? Because the, you know, the expectation really is that we're, you know, we're a two or a three progressing towards a four at the end of the year. And then if my child is a four quarter one, how do I know he or she is making any additional progress? And I think that's why we have that exceeding advancing. Is we need parents to know and understand, and I think that's in particular for those fours where the comments come into play. You know, your child has exceeded, but here's how he or she has made progress along the continuum since the last quarter. I won't get into the whole quarter versus trimesters thing, but I'm not a fan of quarters in general. I don't think they're lengthy enough, particularly at the beginning of the school year, for our newest learners to really be able to report accurately on what they're capable of.
Marcaccio, you actually focused on several of the comments that I was going to reply to. But the one additional thing I would like to highlight is the evaluation key on the instrument specifies for a level four. It's not only exceeding, but it's advancing. It's not good enough to be exceeding. It is only appropriate that we continue the learning of the child for the continuum of the year. And that's advancing them in their understanding and their transference of knowledge. So we made a point of identifying that specifically in that level four rating scale. It just was not on the descriptive that we put into the presentation.
And I, I truly hope this instrument does invite, you know, a lot of debate and discourse. Now, what I hear from families now is the instrument doesn't make any sense. I hate it. I don't want to talk about it. When is the new one coming? Well, now it's here and maybe it's time to have some, you know, some real debate about what makes sense and what doesn't, and, and you know, why things are the way they are.
Great. Well, thank you all for such a robust, robust discussion. We do have a hand up from a member of the public. So if the committee doesn't have any other comments or questions, I'd like to turn to Ms. Bucka.
Hi, how are you?
Well, nice to have you with us.
Thank you. So I just want to say this is great work. I, I can't say it enough. This is wonderful because I agree with you, Mr. Marcaccio, those report cards. There's nothing good to say there. This is wonderful work and I think it's, it's really good. I wanted to bring a couple of perspectives with regards to students with special needs as well as twice exceptional students. First, you know, I think to the point about the expectations of these soft skills or learner qualities. You know, to Alison Powell's point, it's not just parents who don't know how to shape those behaviors. Teaching those behaviors is also a challenge for educators and related service providers. So, you know, I would want to think about infusing them into your P B I systems and what your, you know, instructional piece looks like around those for explicit instruction, because I think sometimes you know, you'll see report card after report card that your child can't follow directions, especially when your child might have like, say, an attention disability or something of that nature. And it's like, well, you know, what are we doing about it? Sort of related is districts that do have years, many years in at the standards based grading. I have heard that there's a, a very common problem with students with disabilities in that they will be a one all year long, sometimes all the way till the end of the year, and then maybe only be at best a two. And then going into the next year, they're already sort of behind and they, their, their report card ends up being sort of a reiteration of their inability to meet grade level standards as opposed to meaningful feedback. And I, I said, I, you know, I think that some of the things I have thought, I have not seen anybody actually implement it well, but I would like to put forth that question to you all in the planning stages about how you might like prevent that from happening and think about that. And what I would suggest that I've always wanted to see someone try was to infuse these standards based grading into the I E P progress reports. And the evaluation of the I E P's effectiveness itself. So, you know, it's very common that parents, even of children with disabilities, don't realize that the I E P is supposed to enable that child to progress on grade level standards, right? So if your child is getting a one on one on one on this report card, that means the I E P is not effective. Something in the accommodations, modifications and specially designed instruction is not meeting their needs. And I think this will also help general education teachers to understand what their role is when they come to an I E P meeting, right? Their role is to say how is the I E P meeting or not meeting the needs in the classroom? So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Terrific input. Thank you so much for that, Ms. Bucka.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any other comments or questions on this, on this topic? I'm very grateful for all of the work that's gone into it until this evening. Superintendent Meyer?
Madam Chair, thank you so much. I just would like to take this opportunity to thank Mr. Pedraza, Mrs. Crudell and Mr. Marcaccio because, and, and the faculties of Meadowbrook and Frenchtown because I had the pleasure of working along with them last year, trying to refine this document. And as Mr. Marcaccio said, the old document is absolutely meaningless in, in communicating to families what their children know and are able to do. So I thank the three of you for your efforts on this.
Great. Well, thank you very much. So that concludes our teaching and learning topic for this evening. So we are going to now move on to our subcommittee reports. And I wonder if Ms. Bucka is going to be rejoining us for the Special Education Advisory Committee report. Are we able to re-promote her? There she is. She's back. You're muted.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I didn't think I'd be a panelist. That's exciting. So, you know, I'll try to make this brief. I know it's getting late, but I, you know, obviously the Special Education Advisory Committee and Patty Harwood and myself have had many years with this school committee and, you know, Carolyn Mark and Jeff Dronzek and Matt Plain have been a part of our evolution as a group and I I want to echo the thanking you for your service and that it has been a pleasure to work with you and you know, selfishly, we hope that maybe one or two or three of you might come and start participating in the C I C world and join us in, in assisting a, a unique population. But thank you for your service and we hope to see more of you in the future.
Thank you for that. Much appreciated.
So updates for the Special Education Advisory Meeting that we had on Wednesday, October twenty eighth. We had a virtual meeting, so that was exciting that our notes have the virtual meeting recording. Generally, the meeting, if I could sum it up, was it's a very big transition that we're trying to make, both chairs, Patty Harwood and myself, although I did, I did formally sort of go on a sabbatical about seven or eight months ago, but I've, I've still been very much the tech support and doing the email and the communication, but we both cannot do the leadership roles anymore and we've been trying to transition other leaders for a year and a half or so, and it's really, it's really a daunting request because it, you know, we get a couple of people that are interested and then we show them the nature of the work and then they're like, this is too much, I'm overwhelmed. So we have a lot of people that want to contribute in like lesser roles, but not be the chairs. So the meeting really began with looking at the formal charge of the C I C, especially since school committee member Matt Plain offered formal changes to the charge that you all, the school committee approved recently. So we needed to review that to make sure that anybody that was interested was on the same page. We then went into the bylaws regarding how we vote for roles and who were the voting members. And we went into what roles would really make a strong C I C and, and particularly for our community, because I think some, some communities, it's different. Our community has experienced success in certain avenues more than others, and we kind of tried to describe some of those so that anyone who was interested might come to us and say, you know, I can't be the chair, but I could do, say, communications or technology. From there, we went into Dr. Hughes's section where she was discussing her monthly newsletter that will be going out, the Scoop Family Edition. I think I just got one today. And that she does a biweekly one for the staff. She talked a lot about what was happening right now with distance learning and the new use of DocuSign. And we had an extensive period of Q and A regarding reopening questions for the fall and distance learning. And, you know, this is a good point for me to pause and also say that, you know, I'm very appreciative for the administrators that were present at the meeting, which was Superintendent Meyer, Mr. Marcaccio and I feel like I'm forgetting somebody. Mr. Marcaccio, and I feel like I'm forgetting somebody. Who am I forgetting? There was one more. Oh, Dr. Hughes, duh. And also, a school committee member, Anne Musella was there. And we really wanted to thank everybody for being there because it, the very first part of making meaningful impact for these populations is to be there, to participate and to listen. So in the discussions about reopening and distance learning, et cetera, we talked a lot about, we talked about some things about school closure and how that's decided and for whom. We talked about students whose services were missed in the spring and how compensative, well, you know, COVID recovery services are addressed. We talked about 504s versus IEPs and how that's handled. Oops, excuse me. And then, then I would say the biggest section that we talked about a lot, that actually got a lot of engagement, was talking about data. That there was to be fall data collection in our distance learning plan and that parents had questions about that, you know, like what are those data sources and what are the metrics? And what does it look like when it's social emotional versus academic, et cetera? And whether that data could be aggregated and shared with the community. And then, and then our school committee member pressed about global data and meeting goals globally. And, and like how, if a student has an IEP and you have goals, how would we know system, systematically, excuse me, how we are doing on that? So there was a really nice discussion there and I don't think we came to yet a full conclusion, but we talked about it. Some parents asked about professional development days and how those were being handled to serve students with disabilities as far as meeting the requirements of supporting them in that distance asynchronous model. And then finally, questions regarding HPTS, which is home-based therapeutic services. You know, that if a student works with an agency and there would be some data with them as well and how we handle sort of that interplay and collaboration, similarly for transition services. Then we had, you know, a Dr. Hughes said she has a coffee chat. And, you know, we also, you know, she shared the dates and times. And then we had a conversation with Anne Musella about the policy committee. And we discussed a little bit about how actually when you all were relatively new, the exiting school committee members, how it was actually Matt Plane, no shout out to Matt Plane, who said the CAC is supposed to advise policy. What policy have you advised? And it was Anne that sort of asked, you know, somewhat of a similar question before she came to the meeting. And, you know, so I had shared to Anne our annual report that we presented every year for a couple of years. This is the first year I think we didn't do it. And that all the policy recommendations that we had made in the past. And I, she came to the CAC meeting and she talked about how, you know, she's really trying to focus on the policy committee more on community engagement. I'm going to misrepresent your comments, Anne Musella, so please feel free to jump in or correct me. But that community engagement and this, this, this must become a two-way conversation that involves feedback from the community. And it's certainly a part of that is these special populations. And that specifically for special education, there is a policy manual that is created that's more internal, like for staff. But as far as what we put externally on our website, all we have really are the state regulations and a reference to those. And that she really wanted to do some more work there and she was interested in seeing if any parents were interested. That's it. That's everything. And then, oh, I'm sorry. The last thing was there was state RICAC notes, which is basically the advisory committee at the state level. Those notes are also in our newsletter. And finally, I would like to thank Elder Druge's principal for sharing the small newsletter with his school. We did request everybody to share it. And as far as I know, that was the, the sharing. There could have been more, but that's the only one that I knew about for a fact. But I just want to illustrate the power of when a principal and administrator shares it in their updates to their folks. We jumped 100 viewers when he shared that from, from where we were originally. And remember, there's 300 plus families with IEPs, then even more with 504 plans. And we need to be transparently sharing this information in these notes. That's it.
Great. Wonderful. Thank you so much for that update. Does anybody have any comments or questions from Ms. Bucka? Thank you so much for being with us this evening. Appreciate the update. Okay, so that brings us to the next one, which is the Wellness Committee. That's me. We met for the first time for the school year on Monday, October 26th. We had, it was a, as many of you know, the Health and Wellness Committee and the Mental Health Subcommittee have been meeting separately for a variety of reasons over the last few years, mostly logistical, but also because it simply allowed for folks to kind of focus on those aspects of wellness that they were most interested in, whether it was mental health or physical activity or school meals or something like that. But we've decided that it makes sense to bring the committee back together again. I was certainly intending on doing that for the first meeting of the school year. We do very much want to be focused on the whole child. And so there is something that seems a little strange about separating them out. And so we did bring everybody back together for the first time for the school year. Some of you will remember that there were members of those committees that served on the, the task force for social emotional health. But this was the first official meeting of the Wellness Committee for the year. And the committee, so, so as you can imagine, there were a lot of updates to provide to committee members. And so a good chunk of the meeting was really spent just bringing everybody up to speed on all of the different wellness that the district has had to address under the pandemic. Just a couple of things that I'll note and that are, that are, first, that the committee has decided it wants to remain together for the coming school year. They can assess under new leadership whether they want to continue that way after this year, but certainly in this COVID environment, when the meetings are virtual anyway, it just seemed to make sense to bring the committee together for the rest of the year. And then the one, the one thing that I will note is that some of you know that I've been serving on the Steering Committee for the Rhode Island Healthy Schools Coalition and that one of the co-directors of that organization has been a public member of the Wellness Committee here in East Greenwich. She and the Steering Committee have worked with the state to provide an alternative to the annual school breakfast for wellness leaders that some of you have attended in the past. In lieu of doing that this year, they orchestrated a virtual event with Mark Brackett. He is out of Yale and one of the leading national thinkers around social emotional learning. He's written books. He, he has helped to create the Ruler Program out of Yale that a couple of districts in the state are utilizing. And so the Healthy Schools Coalition has created an event that features Mark Brackett, decided to do it rather than just on some random morning, but to do it on a day that was already designated as a professional learning day for school staff and to do it in partnership and with the support of RIDE. So as a virtual event, of course, they can accommodate many more people than they could for the school breakfast or the, for the breakfast for school wellness leaders. And in fact, they're approaching 800 registrants. And I just wanted to say how pleased and proud I am. This is a district, our district is a district that has devoted a lot of time and attention over the last few years to social emotional health. And I'm pleased to report that we have close to 90 members of our administration and staff that are signed up to participate in this professional learning opportunity Monday morning. It is also open to the public, so anybody who is interested, if they're still accepting registrations, which I think they are, they keep upgrading their Zoom account so they can accommodate more people. But if anybody's interested in attending, you can certainly get more information from the Rhode Island Healthy Schools Coalition website. Or you can contact me or Mrs. Meyer, but I'm very pleased that the district's going to be participating in that as well as some of our Wellness Committee members. And I think that's, that's probably it for that. So anybody have any comments or questions? I, of course, used the meeting as an opportunity to say my goodbyes. It's been a wonderful group to work with over these last few years. And I certainly remain open to, to supporting whoever becomes the new Wellness Committee Chair moving forward. So I hope you will communicate my willingness to support that person as they transition into the role, whoever that may be. So with that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Musella for a policy report.
Thank you. Policy Committee met same day as CAC. I think that was October 28th or something like that, end of October. We, there were several policies on the agenda, but this is all sort of a, sort of a brainstorming, planning, strategizing. The overarching theme was engagement. We had discussed just briefly here, the notion of a community engagement policy. In fact, we do have a community outreach policy, which is older. But then we also have, there are requirements of the Every Student Succeeds Act from 2015, I believe, that require certain school level and district level parent family engagement policies. Mrs. Meyer and I talked about that before and then we opened it up. So Matt Oliverio was going to be exploring, you know, what, what we certainly currently have with respect to, because, because we have a lot of these pieces in place currently at the school level and, and pieces here and there. But Matt Oliverio is going to be exploring that further so that as we can sort of refine what we have and update, we will do that. And then the discussion was also about how can we take certain aspects of what might be required in a parent family engagement policy that is mandated by Title I? What components of that might we expand to apply globally across the district? Including involving parents in the development of parent and family engagement policy. An annual or regular evaluation of that policy and how well are we engaging? Frequent reports of progress to parents, which we kind of do. But, and then, you know, there's language about access to parents and engagement and two-way meaningful engagement, which I, I think, you know, that's a partnership with parents is already in our, our current strategic plan that I keep saying is about to turn into a pumpkin. I'm sure that we will continue that as a, as an ideal. So we're exploring that. In addition to ways to receive feedback, we have a complaint resolution policy. It's called procedure in our policy manual. Taking a closer look at that, that currently applies to reporting or raising the issue of more actionable events, harassment, bullying, discrimination, perhaps expanding that or a separate policy that really invites feedback and parent concerns. That could also relate to, we have another policy on the books that is the Educator Code of Professional Ethics, right? So some standards so that we, we set forth, we do a better job of communicating to parents what expectation should be like. And we invite feedback in a meaningful way, not as a, not as a punitive measure, but for true opportunities for collaboration. So that was the, really the gist of that and the, the starting point with that is, is Matt Oliverio's work to, to look at that Title I piece. And then in addition, I, I did request to, to get CX Agenda. And, and we talked about another piece of that as well. The, the policy feedback that they shared with me or Nicole Bucka had shared with me was from, I think, August 2018. And there were a couple of, a couple of concerns that they had with respect to policies on curriculum, professional development. I don't think there is a current policy on professional development. But, and whether or not there's a CAC member who might want to become a member of the Policy Committee, at the very least, we can do things like, I can do things like when the Policy Committee Agenda is set and draft policies are sent to the Policy Committee, sharing it with CAC leadership so that they have an opportunity to weigh in, although we've certainly invited them in for a lot of our discussions on policies that really relate specifically to some of our special populations, but really inviting them in much more to our process. So that's it. Thanks.
Thank you so much. Any comments or questions from Ms. Musella tonight? All right. Wonderful. So that brings us to our, our last subcommittee update, which is facilities. Ms. Powell?
You know, the, the most exciting stuff to the end. So we're building a theme park. No, I'm just kidding. Only, but no one be able to come, so it'd be sad. So a lot of what we did, we met on the 29th. We've already sort of gone, gone over. We moved forward with our Stage Two by doing architect interviews. We already talked about that. That's going to be due on February 15th, so hopefully we're moving right along with our Stage Two. We also discussed projects that are under the $5 million bond, like to give updates on those for everybody all the time. So we had some projects queued up that sort of got canceled because of COVID. So we're starting back up with those, the security and ADA projects that we had already bid out. We're going back out for those again, along with some civil projects at Meadowbrook to fix the envelope and also the traffic and entry pattern. And a big HVAC project at the high school. So we're hoping to submit these to RIDE by Thanksgiving for approval because that's how early we have to get them in if we want to start doing that work this summer. That's what's going on with construction right now. So hopefully that will all go swimmingly and we will get that work done. And then the other things we talked about had to do with, you know, going forward with master planning because of several new development projects in the pipeline. And we talked about probably the need to have our demographic study updated because right now there's a super hot housing market in East Greenwich, as members of the committee know. We've got a lot of development coming, so we think we need to update that because we think there's going to be probably some impact on our district. And then the other things we talked about had to do with our, you know, reopening response. Mr. Wilmar let us know that everything was working as it should and there were no major problems or any new purchasing needs other than potentially increased utility costs. You know, moving into the winter, because as you heard, we're getting 250 air purifiers that all have to be plugged in and running all the time. So that might have something to do that, but we'll have updates if that happens. And, you know, we did get the air purifiers and did confirm that they are free. Hooray! So they'll be there to help as we have to, you know, start closing down the dampers with much less in the outside air. These will sort of take place of that and help get those air changes. So our classrooms are still safe. And that is all I have.
Great. Terrific. Thank you so much. Any comments or questions for Ms. Powell?
I'm sad about the theme park, I know.
I know. I'm very sad about the theme park. All right. Well, that concludes our subcommittee reports. We have no additional discussion items this evening. I'll ask if any members of the committee have any suggestions for future agenda items. Because apparently I'm planning another agenda. All right. Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Go move.
The move by Mr. Plane. Second by Mr. Dronzek. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Roll call vote. Austin Powell?
Aye.
Anne Musella?
Aye.
Carolyn Mark?
Aye.
Jean Quinn?
Aye.
Jeff Dronzek?
Aye.
Lori McEwen?
Aye.
Matt Plane?
Aye.
The ayes have it. We'll see you again next week. Have a great night, everyone. Bye.